All in order, the December 11th, 2018 Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. We have some special guests here this evening from 4528 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, so I guess I'm going to step up and lead us in the pledge. Don't be shy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have a published agenda tonight. Is there, are there any additions or subtractions to tonight's agenda? I maintain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion of tonight's agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We are to our first citizen comment period for any items that are on the agenda this evening. We have a second period for any items. Does anyone wish to speak to any items on this evening's agenda? All right, with that, I will close the first citizen comment period, and we are to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Second from Councilmember Clausen. Discussion of the consent items. None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Going right along here, Mr. Powers, where do you? Presentation, Mr. John Powers from the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance. Give us a presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to briefly update you on the work of your strategic partner in economic development here in Kitsap County and the city of Port Orchard, the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance. As you know, we publish a formal report, quarterly report every 90 days that's been distributed to the elected officials here, and I just want to highlight a few numbers. I want to comment on two other significant things occurring from my perspective in economic development work here in your community. And then I want to introduce one of the clients, a Port Orchard-based business, Gracym Industries, that is one of the many businesses here in our community that we assist in government contracting and promoting their products. And today, we have Mr. Mark Foxworth, who along with his wife, Mary Beth Foxworth, are the owner-operators of Gracym Industries. And then their sales manager, Vice President for Sales Development Manager, Lea Corora, is with us here tonight as well, and she'll tell the story of Gracym and how we work together. So first, the numbers. If you look at what's occurred the last quarter, we assisted 37 companies that had Port Orchard interests or interested in Port Orchard. We assisted 10 PTAC clients such as Gracym Industries, that's our Procurement Technical Assistance Center services, our lead service to small businesses looking to connect on government contract work, Department of Defense, and beyond. We did, for the Port Orchard market, we did 16 responses to specific inquiries and requests for reports on data demographics about the marketplace here. We contacted nine companies that expressed interest in relocating in Kitsap County, including Port Orchard, nine in that quarter. Many of those were follow-on to our work at the Farborough Air Show last July. And then we conducted two classes, PTAC classes, in that quarter. I also want to make mention of the presentation here to the council, I think it was two meetings ago, regarding the opportunity zone that the city is pursuing, two designated zones in Port Orchard, and the one on the waterfront that was the subject of a presentation about a master plan development, which was very exciting. I was here for that, and I thought it was well, well done. And we were pleased, the alliance, to work with the mayor and his team and the city last March as you pursued that designation, and we played a small role in helping that application move forward. So that's a very exciting project for this community and beyond. I think it really has transformational aspects to it. This week, we will have our fourth quarter board meeting. It'll be up at Olympic College, the Paulsboro campus. And at that meeting, in addition to kind of winding up the year's activities, we will be honoring Mr. Rick Tift, who is the Chief Civilian Officer, Executive Officer, at the Peters Island Naval Shipyard and Intermediate Maintenance Facility. And we are honoring him as an outstanding Olympic College alumni that's made significant contributions to this community. Last year, we started that award in concert with the Olympic College Foundation. The first recipient last year was Nathan Evans, who heads up Microsoft's office in Silverdale and was an OC grad himself. And Rick was OC, UW, accounting into the shipyard and here for nearly, I think, 16 years. He has been the chief officer and done a great job in helping to lead that significant operation. So we welcome your attendance at that quarterly board meeting. It begins at 3:00, and at 5:00 o'clock, we'll be presenting that award to Mr. Tift, and then we'll have a little holiday celebration afterwards. So with that, unless there's any questions regarding the report, I'd like to bring up our tonight's guest. Yes, please.
I just, when is your breakfast?
Oh, thank you. That is the 31st of January. I believe that's a Thursday on the calendar in front of me. It'll be at the Conference Center this year. The doors open at 7:00 a.m. The program begins at 7:30, and it runs until 10:00. And in addition to having the economist from Western Washington University, Dr. Hart Hoag, to give us the big picture on economics, both local, regionally, state, and nationally. We'll also hear from the commander, commanding officer of the shipyard, naval-based Kitsap. And I just drew a blank. It's Captain Alan.
Schrader.
Schrader, thank you very much, Mayor. And he's going to give us an update on what's happening at the shipyard, and there's a lot of things occurring there relative to future planning and rebuilding and rehabilitating much of their infrastructure there. So there's going to be a lot of activity in the shipyard here in the coming years, and he'll give us an insight on that. So with that, I am going to call forward Lea Corora and have her tell the story of Gracym Industries, their services, and how they work with us and the community to build their business. Lea.
Hello? Is this thing on?
Yes.
Hi, so I'm Lea. I'm the Sales and Marketing Manager for Gracym Industrial Services. We've been based here in Port Orchard for over 25 years, providing industrial automation solutions to customers mostly in the petrochemical manufacturing and defense industries. So we have two major divisions of our company. Gracym Industrial Services, our core business is instrumentation and process control solutions for mostly oil and gas and manufacturing customers, and they're based all up and down the West Coast. We've also done some work in the Gulf of Mexico as well. And then about five years ago, we started Gracym Robotics Systems, and we're an industrial automation solutions integrator, system integrator for, for robotic systems, remote-operated vehicles, autonomous vehicles. And yeah, I've been with the company for about a year and a half. It's been around for 25 years here in Port Orchard. The current owners purchased the company about 10 years ago and have been expanding into, you know, just a broader base of services. So here in Washington State, I mainly work with the Industrial Robotics Division of the company, and our customers are mostly in aerospace. We work with a lot of Tier One, Tier Two Boeing subcontractors. And then we also work with a really diverse range of industries, from food processing to, you know, wood products, manufacturing, waste disposal, all sorts of things. And we've been working with KEDA and CADA, the Kitsap Aerospace and Defense Alliance, for the past, I guess, the past five or six years, to try and expand our presence in the defense industries, get some work out at the shipyard possibly in the future, and then also make more connections in aerospace, since we, we do a lot of work in aerospace. And it's been really helpful, you know, I receive all of the networking events and updates about what's going on locally from KEDA, from John and Kathy, and get to attend events. Last year, CADA let us sit in on their booth at the Pacific Northwest Aerospace Alliance Conference in February, and that was really helpful because that's where most of our customers show up every year to talk about aerospace solutions. So allowed us to be there and touch base without having to spend our entire marketing budget going to just one conference. So they've been a really great resource, and we look forward to, you know, continuing to work with them.
Questions for Lea?
Mr. Chang, can you, do you have the headquarters here, a physical presence?
Yeah, so we're located in the Woodridge Professional Center on Mile Hill Road. We have a, we have a shop there for our industrial robotics systems and an office building, and then we have an off-site shop out in Gig Harbor.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lea.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Powers, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Gracym Industries for sharing their story with us tonight. It's always good to hear from the client, so thank you very much.
That's wonderful.
Appreciate it. All right, we're on to our business items this evening. And the first of those is Business Item A, Adoption of a Resolution Conferring, Confirming Mayoral Appointments to Boards and Commissions. I guess, is that me, or? Yes, it is. Wow.
They are your appointments.
They are my appointments, I guess. All right. Annually, the Clerk's Office reviews the expiring terms or vacancies of members of various boards and commissions. The mayor has appointed the following persons to boards and commission. The Planning Commission, reappearance of Marcus Lane to a four-year term expiring December 31st, 2022. The Civil Surface Commission, the reappearance of Rick Wyatt for a six-year term expiring December 31st, 2024. The Design Review Board, appointment of Scott Bonjukian for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2021. If you remember Scott, he was the intern that worked for city, the city, and worked for the consultant that helped us do our design standards. So he's a great addition to, to the Design Review Board. The reappearance of Noel Larson for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020, 21. And the Animal Control Board, the reappearance of Bjorn Bjorki for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2021. Building Appeals Board, the reappearance of Matt Zalaki for a five-year term expiring December 31st, 2023. The Law Enforcement Officer and Firefighter Disability Board, the reappearance of Jerry Childs for a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2020. That is normally a two-year term that happens, the city fills, and then Paulsboro fills the other two years, Paulsboro's turn, but they didn't have anybody to fill it. So Becky asked me if my prior appointment wanted to fill it, and I asked Jerry, and he graciously, graciously accepted. The Kitsap County Grant Recommendation Committee, reappearance of Chris Stansberry for a one-year term expiring December 31st, 2019. The Kitsap County Grant Services Recommend, Recommendation Committee, I think I've got the old agenda. One of these two is, is the second one an appointment?
Yes.
Okay, this one is an appointment of Chris Stansberry for a one-year term expiring December 31st, 2019. And so Chris is graciously accepted, serving on both grant committees. I couldn't find someone to fill that role, so hopefully this time next year, I'll have somebody else. Chris said she would do both committees for one year. And in error, the, there's a new agenda that was released on Monday morning. It has Councilmember Rosa Pepe. He is not my appointment to the Transit Board. That is one of your appointments, and that will come next council meeting as a separate action. So that is not on there. So the, the mayor recommends adoption of resolution, confirming my appointments as presented.
I move to adopt a resolution confirming the mayor's appointments to the boards and commissions as set forth in the resolution presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions about my appointments?
Mr. Mayor, the resolution that's in the pack, it still refers to Jay's appointment.
And Brandy had corrected it. I apologize if she didn't get that into your mailbox.
There should have been an updated version of.
The staff report as well as the resolution striking the Kitsap Transit, so.
Teed it electronically.
You got it electronically, I'm sorry.
I got this electronically, and it's still included. So I just want to confirm that the appointment to the Transit Board is not on there, otherwise I'm going to recuse myself, so.
Correct. It is, for the record, it has been stricken from the.
amended.
Published agenda and will be revised accordingly.
Okay, so then I will vote on the appointments.
Yes, okay, thank you for clarifying. Other questions? Then you'll be voting on the mayoral appointments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the appointments are confirmed. You're on to 7B, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Contract with Schneider Equipment, Inc., DBU Snyder Water Services for the Well 13 Drilling Project. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor, councilmembers. On October 26th, 2018, and November 2nd, 2018, city's Public Works Department advertised in the Port Orchard Independent, the city's webpage, and the Daily Journal of Commerce, and uploaded the bid documents to the Washington Builders Exchange. By the November 28th, 2018 bid due date at 12:00 noon, the city received and opened two sealed bids for the Well 13 Drilling Project. In general summary, the sealed bids that were received, with applicable tax included, ranged from an apparent low of 1.395 million to the apparent high at 1.46 million, with the engineers estimate at between 1.1 and 1.4 million. Following the completion of the mandatory bidder's responsibility checklist, it was determined that Schneider Equipment Incorporated doing business as Schneider Water Services provided the lowest responsive and qualified bid proposal of $1,395,091 for the Well 13 Drilling Project. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Schneider Equipment Incorporated, DBA Schneider Water Services, in an amount not to exceed $1,395,091, applicable taxes included, for the Well 13 project, and funding for this project is provided within Capital Fund 413, which was part of that DWSRF loan.
Councilmember Lucarelli.
I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Schneider Equipment, Inc., ABA, DBA, sorry, doing business as Schneider Water Services, in an amount not to exceed $1,395,091, applicable taxes included, for the Well Number 13 Drilling Project.
Kachardi, seconded. This has been a long time coming. I know that we were awarded that alone, gosh, almost two years ago, and then the legislature didn't vote on a capital budget, which this was linked to that capital budget. So it stalled the project for a year. So we've got, had, got that design back on track, the design's done, and now we're awarding two of the.
Two or five.
Contracts that are associated, three, three contracts associated with this project. The next one is the site clearing, and then we'll have a treatment system and some distribution lines that come in at a future date, so just a little background for you. Questions of Mr. Dorsey?
I just, what's the timeline?
Of the.
Of drilling, of.
Just the drilling.
These people going to work.
They'll be starting immediately. My sense is, yeah, I, I would have a better idea on the site work. You know, that site work will be, you know, done definitely this summer.
Okay.
I mean, the site work, most of the site work has to be done before the driller actually comes in, because we're going to create the pad. And as we know, drilling down 1,000 to 1,500 feet is, it is what it is, so, you know, I'm, the hope is that we have Well 13 at least in place, and we have a well log where we're, the source is producing on a bail test, you know, definitely within 2019.
Thank you.
I mean, Councilmember Clausen and Councilmember Chang and myself can remember a time when we drilled Well 10 down there.
10 and 12.
Yeah, we, seems like we came to every council meeting and got to approve another change order because we kept pounding a hole and not finding water, so hopefully that isn't the case at all here, and.
I was disappointed, because I thought we were going to hit oil before we hit water.
This is lucky Well 13 here, so we're going to be, we're going to be just fine. Other questions for Mr. Dorsey? Okay, with that, you'll be voting on a resolution approving a contract with Schneider Equipment for the services for the Well 13 Drilling Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the contract is approved. So we are to 7C, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Contract with Scarsella Brothers, Inc., for the Well 13 Site Preparation Project. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. So this is the associated site clearing for the well drilling. And again, on October 26th and November 2nd, we advertised in the Independent, the webpage and the Daily Journal of Commerce, and we also uploaded the bids to the Builders Exchange, and on November 28th at noon, we opened both bids at the same time. The city received 19 sealed bids for the site preparation project. So in general summary, the sealed bids that did have the applicable tax ranged from an apparent low of about 531,000 to a high of 933,000-ish, with the engineers estimate at 820 to 870. Following the completion of the mandatory bidder checklist, it was determined that Scarsella Brothers provided the lowest responsive and qualified bid at $530,689.39. So that was a, a nice bid. Same funding as the other portion of the project, so staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution thereby approving the contract with Scarsella Brothers, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $530,689.39 for the Well 13 Site Preparation Project.
Councilmember Deener.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Scarsella Brothers Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $530,689.39, taxes included, for the Well Number 13 Site Preparation Project.
Second by Councilmember Kachardi. It's nice to see the number of bids we got, and for once, to get a bid that was significantly lower than the engineer's estimate, because that hasn't been the trend. Other questions for Mr. Dorsey? Okay, you'll be voting on a resolution to approve a contract with Scarsella Brothers for the site, well, the Well 13 Site Preparation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, contract's approved. We are to, Item D, Approval of Addendum Number One to Contract Number 053-18 with Waterman Investment Partners LLC for the 640 Bay Street Purchase and Sale Agreement. And that is Ms. Cates.
Good evening, council, Mayor. The city entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Waterman Investment Partners LLC on July 10th, 2018, which set forth the terms of the buyer's purchase and development of the property located at 640 Bay Street. Since that time, it has come to the parties' attention that certain revisions to the agreement are in the interests of both. Therefore, the parties have agreed to revise several things with regard to the agreement. The purchase price for the property, certain of the requirements for the development agreement to be entered into separately by the parties, the specific improvements to be constructed in connection with the development that will constitute valuable consideration to be provided by the buyer, and the closing date of the agreement. The parties have memorialized these revisions in Addendum Number One to the agreement. Staff recommends approval of Addendum Number One to the 640 Bay Street Purchase and Sale Agreement as presented.
Mr. Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Addendum Number One to the 640 Bay Street Purchase and Sales Agreement as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. I'm sure we have some discussion. Councilmember Ashby, you want to start?
Sure, I'll start. I must say that I had given, since we had the presentation a couple weeks ago, I've given some thought to it, and I'm very supportive of the project and the project moving forward. I tried, I thought about what was the risk to the citizens of doing an extension, and it was just time, you know? The only risk was time, is the six months, and that seemed like a very reasonable concession on our part, so. So I did have some questions, however, I just wanted clarification, and that is, the original purchase and sale agreement that we signed had a due diligence period, and that due diligence period was over on November 30th, 2018, and our staff report didn't mention if anything was brought forward at that date that we would need to address. So I'm assuming that they did, that nothing came forward and there was no extension of the due diligence date being requested.
That's correct.
Okay, and then with that said, Section 2 of our original agreement talks about the deposit, and the, the earnest money that we took at the time was a promissory note, and the, our agreement says the earnest money note will be converted to cash upon expiration of the due diligence period. So I just wanted to make sure that the agreement that we had entered into had been executed to our understanding.
And I've spoke with the purchaser today, that I'll take responsibility for that aspect of it falling through the cracks, so if you want, so the, there has been no request to extend the due diligence period, so the note should be converted with the escrow company. And with your indulgence, maybe you want to amend this to state that the staff or myself confirms the conversion of the note before I sign the purchase and sale agreement, I think would be at least, you know, I would provide that due diligence, and if that's acceptable to the purchaser, do you want to step to the microphone and we'll handle it that way?
Steve Siegel, Waterman Investment Partners. Councilmember Ashby, just to clarify, that wasn't an oversight necessarily. We, we addressed you on November 27th with the proposal that we extend, and assuming that that was going to take place, that was the objective, was should we extend the closing, we would then convert the note to earnest money cash.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just a question. I had, it wasn't in the staff report, so I thought I, I thought I'd ask.
You're exactly correct, and in conversations with your very astute staff, Mr. Bond, we also kind of made certain, we addressed that and noted that as well, to make certain that we concluded that piece as well.
Thank you. And we're all excited to see your next steps.
You know, and I will just say today, I made a presentation to the Port of Bremerton. It was very positive, very supportive. Three commissioners, just got a text from one again saying how excited they are, and they believe that this is an opportune time for Port Orchard and South Kitsap to participate if we can keep this moving, so thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Siegel.
Do we need an amendment to the motion, just to make sure that Mayor has done his due diligence, or do we just?
Recommend that, Sharon, or, is that your recommendation?
It would be my recommendation to put it in the record that that's what, the amendment the city council is requesting.
I would make a motion to have the mayor confirm that the earnest money note has been converted to cash and deposited with escrow prior to signing the extension agreement.
Second.
Mr. Ashby, you seconded my original motion. I would be pleased to second her amendment, so.
Okay, so we have an amendment that requires that myself or staff confirm that the promissory note has been converted to cash prior to the city signing the extension agreement. Any discussion of that amendment? Again, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment passes, so now we're back to the main motion. Further questions on the main motion? Mr. Chang?
I would echo what Councilwoman Ashby said. I am also excited about the project. I'm always disappointed by any delay, but six months does seem like a drop in the bucket, and I really like that the scope has expanded. It makes a lot of sense, and it's very exciting. They have, it sounds like the. it's very exciting. Um, I, they have, it sounds like the investor has talked to the people that I hope they would talk to. And what we see now is probably very different from what could happen. So I'm very excited about that.
Remember when we started this process too, it was, the one fifty we're selling it for is our costs in this project, and, and we've got a list of public amenities beyond that that, so we're going to get, I mean, we had folks that wanted to buy this property and hold in their land bank, and we could have received probably more money than the hundred and fifty. But I, I, I think the desire was for us to get a, a project on that, and a building built on that pad, and not just have someone hold that piece of property in their land bank. The economic value is, to our city, is, is tremendous to, for us to get something built there and really set the standard and the stage for what the future holds. Councilmember Kuchardi?
One more comment. I think another thing that warrants the six-month extension is, you know, things have changed since the execution of this original agreement, and I think you are aware of the legislator and passing the opportunity for our local Public Facilities District to be able to fund via private partner, or private public partnerships. And that's something that new that was really came out in, in September. And I know this project, I happened to be at that meeting last week that presented in front of the Public Facilities District, and it appears that it qualifies for, for that type of support. And so again, as we work, as the, as the, as the acquirer of this property works through that process, I think it justifies this extension as well.
Mr. Deener?
And I too support that extension. I think that we will see an exponentially better project by waiting and seeing what shakes out.
Wonderful. All right. So be voting on the extension of the contract to Waterman Partners for the purchase of six forty Bay Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the extension is approved. We are to item seven E, approval of the November twentieth, twenty eighteen city council work-study minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the work-study session meeting minutes of November twentieth.
Second.
I believe I'll get an extension from Councilmember Chang and Councilmember Claussen. So all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The two extensions. Not extensions, we did that earlier. Seven F, approval of the November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen council meeting minutes. And I think we'll get a, an, an extension from Councilmember Kuchardi and Chang on this one. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the regular council meeting minutes of November twenty-seventh.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the November twenty-seventh council meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. And then I have two extension, extensions. I don't know what that word tonight. All right, we're to our council committee reports. Finance, were they still trying to, were trying to schedule a meeting before next week's council meeting, or is that necessary, Mr. Crocker?
I don't think it's necessary unless the finance committee would like to meet and talk about the budget amendment and anything else that's coming before the council that night, but I don't think it's necessary. We've talked about all the projects, the amendments coming forward. It's primarily the capital projects three oh two. Nothing really has popped out yet. So I leave up to the committee.
I know the finance committee hasn't met, so probably don't have a report.
Next year.
You'll report next year. All right. Economic Development and Tourism, you met yesterday.
We did. We had a good meeting yesterday, and it was very well attended. We had, the Chamber of Commerce was here, two members from the Portage and Bay Street Association, the manager of Days Inn, as well as the staff and the committee, our, the table was full. We discussed the Bremerton, um, the summer foot ferry schedule. Bremerton is a willing partner again this next summer, so we will be running on Sundays, ten to six, and on special event days. It'll be the same schedule that we've had the last couple of years. The Chamber of Commerce did request, um, council to do an evaluation, or the Economic Development Committee to do an evaluation of the service. And we agreed to do that. It's, it's good to do that every couple of years to make sure that the service we're providing is being well utilized. And P O B S A, the Portage and Bay Street Association volunteered to do a survey of the downtown merchants for its effectiveness. So that was, um, the first thing we talked about. And then we had two representatives from E V I Productions join us, Mike Ziak and Steve Pyle. Mike is the primary, and he described to us what the video production process would be like. This is the company that will be updating our videos for us. And everyone in attendance gave input for script messaging, things that we wanted, um, the videos to highlight, or suggestions of what could be highlighted. And I believe Mike, Mike Ziak will be reaching out for more suggestions. And I would suggest if any council has any input they want in the videos, that they get it to Brandy and she can get it onto Mike. Um, then Clerk Reinersen gave us a summary updates, um, a summary of the updates that are needed for the temporary vendor permits ordinance that we have night, right now. And changes are needed because of the state's updated licensing rules. Um, and we need to complete that work before the end of the year. So I believe we will be seeing something in our next, for our next meeting. And we discussed that, the changes were pretty minimal. It was basically just changing some definitions and, and then the mayor confirmed that a solution to hang the promotional banners across Bay Street wasn't found. We can't, you know, we can't use the posts, and we couldn't come up with the appropriate brackets for the buildings. So we will continue accepting reservations to place those banners on the fence at about six forty Bay Street. But we decided to only accept the reservations until June thirtieth, or until the property, the sale closes, because then we don't know whether the new owners will be wanting the banners placed or not. So we kind of have a, a deadline, and we'll just, for those of you who haven't participated in this, January first, there's a line at the door to reserve their banners. So hopefully we can take care of that. Councilman Deener, we, we discussed the single-use plastic bag reduction again. And Scott brought with him some reports prepared by Thurston County. One was after six months and one was after two years of their plastic bag reduction. And we had those forwarded to the entire council for your review. We've become aware that Representative Storm Peters, Strom Peterson from Edmonds is introducing a statewide single-use plastic bag bat. I contacted Brianna Murray, our lobbyist, to see if she could get us the language in that proposed, that proposed bill. It's not available yet, but as soon as it is available, she will get it to us. It seemed prudent for us to be very much aware of what the state was going to do before we did something independent of that. And then the other thing we talked about was the importance of business retention and how we can be proactive in that business retention. And I believe our six forty Bay Street project kind of nudged us along in that, because we do have a major employer downtown that will be involved in that process. And we want to make sure that they can remain downtown and not relocate. Do you want me to go on to K R C C and Highway sixteen?
Certainly.
Okay. Um, they, we had a Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council on December fourth, and again, we had a lot of activity. Mayor Becky Erickson of Paulsbow and County Commissioner Ed Wolf were elected chair and vice chair for two thousand and nineteen. And then after a two-year absence, Bremerton has agreed to rejoin K R C C. And this is a direct result of our mayor Patanzo's effort. He and Bremerton Council President Eric Younger were able to find common ground and create acceptable solutions for us. And I do not believe this would have happened had it not been the proactive and skilled negotiation that our mayor did. So we appreciate that a great deal. But in this negotiation, they came up with things that we needed to change. And we have, um, one of Bremerton's concerns was the voting structure at K R C C. It was a weighted voting structure, which we felt as a city was very important. But, um, Rob and Eric were able to come together and created a new, what we call super majority vote of seventy-five percent of the membership for certain issues, such as our budget, our work plan, and transportation funding, the transportation funding being a real key, that seventy-five percent of our board members will need to vote favorably. And this does protect our small city status. Sometimes we get limit, we only get two votes and other people get more votes than that. So this does a nice job of balancing that. That required a bylaw change, so we will be changing the bylaws. Well, we did, we approved that at, um, the meeting the first of December.
Then an I L A will come back for?
Correct, correct.
This body.
Right. The other thing that we, that we changed is because this new voting structure requires a seventy-five percent of all of our members, there are times when not all of our members can be present. The mayor and I have an alternate, which is Councilman Rose Pepe. Okay, all of the councils are able to provide an alternate. However, there are only three county commissioners, so they, and they all are on the board, so they don't have an alternate. They can't, they don't have another commissioner to be an alternate. So we are allowing them to appoint an elected county official to be their alternate. And that again is a bylaw and ultimately an I L A change. At the same time we did that, we realized that Kitsap Transit did not have an opportunity for an alternate. So we are allowing in the bylaws for a senior staff member of Kitsap Transit, because they could have one of their board members go to the K R C C board, but they are already all on the K R C C board. So the only opportunity for Kitsap Transit was to have a non-elected but a senior staff member. So we made those bylaw changes, all of which will be put in the form into our inter-local agreement, which will come before all of the councils in February, and then go back, um, for final approval at K R C C in March. So that was that. We also had legislative reception the end of November that was very well attended, and I thought a great success. The other meeting I went to was the Highway sixteen, Highway three, Washington State Department of Transportation study. Um, all of the stakeholders of that group were there, and that was last week, because DOT had released a draft of their final report. I attended, Councilman Claussen attended on behalf of Kitsap Transit, and Mayor Patanzo was there. Um, what we agreed to at that meeting is we all have projects that have been called out in this report. And what we agreed to is that for this next legislative session, we will be independently promoting our projects in Olympia. Pierce County will do what they need to do with their Highway three oh two. Gig Harbor will do what they need to do. We already have a legislative agenda set that involves Highway one sixty. So we will independently do those. However, we will support the projects of the other jurisdictions. As is always when you're talking Highway sixteen and Highway three, GORST is the big issue. It is the most money, it is the most complicated solution. And we were very fortunate at this meeting that Bremerton raised their hand to be the point on GORST. In the past, no one has accepted responsibility for GORST, and Bremerton is willing to do that. And they, um, they know, as John Powers alluded to earlier, the Navy is planning a multi-billion dollar upgrade to P S N S. And transportation of their workforce and their freight will be elements of that upgrade. And so, um, the military will be active in whatever solutions I believe are brought forward for, for GORST. But I thought it was a, a great meeting, and I thought our objective was be able to not lose sight of Highway one sixty, and we were given the opportunity to lobby that on our own. So that was very good. And that's all I have.
That change at K R C C actually started with a dinner at the A W S C conference this past summer. So it only took six months to get to the finish line, but it was a very complex issue. And so I'm just happy that we were able to get Bremerton, because it's important to have the largest city in the county at the table when we're talking about planning and transportation dollars. And I think, so I'm happy that Bremerton's back at the table with us. That, Utilities, I see you're meeting next week?
Next Monday, here at nine thirty a.m.
Okay. Superior Advisory Committee?
January sixteenth, that's here at six thirty p.m.
And Land Use, I don't think you've met, it's January seventh.
We did not meet recently, and we're scheduled to meet January seventh, nine thirty at D C D.
Okay. And Jay, have you started the lodging tax process for next year yet?
No, but we'll be, we'll be coming forth about March.
Okay. Checking in. So Festival of Chimes and Lights, it looked like it was a success.
Oh, it was wonderful. It actually was so well-attended. And special thanks to staff for all the help that was given. Janine, if you're around, um, Brandy, and of course, Public Works was absolutely amazing. Um, thank you all for attending, and I, I, the tree contest this year went over very, very well, and people are asking to have it again. So we'll be bringing that up in the committee meeting on Monday. And there was some concern about how it was judged. It was Santa and Mrs. Santa that judged the trees this year. And they actually did a different, had a different view of how to do that. And one I have to tell you about, Rutzel was one of the winners, um, representing the Northwest. And when I took the prize over, um, one of the ladies actually started crying. They were so happy. The ornaments were all made by the people, the residents at Rutzel, and it was very meaningful to them. And it was a presence for them in our, in our area. So it really was wonderful. And I have photos, and I'll be presenting those at an upcoming meeting. But thank you so much. I also wanted to, for the record, let everyone know that the council members actually contributed for the prizes. None of that money came out of the city coffers. It was all donated by the council members themselves, and I thank you all. And we also paid for our tree and that kind of thing. So it was beautiful and festive. Thank you for coming, and thank you for being so supportive.
Good job.
I had numerous positive comments about lighting festival, how downtown looks, and so thank you, Councilmember Lou Corelli. Jay?
No, I just echo what everybody else said, and Cindy and staff, the trees downtown. I've got so many comments from drivers and folks up at the district office, and they're very excited about wanting to do it again next year, and how festive it looks in the evening and even during the day. How many people have commented on it?
It's been very positive.
The only thing I would add is I've gotten a lot of compliments as well, and I actually got two comments about they're looking forward to the new chimes next year.
Oh, no.
One last time, these chimes will ring, right?
I know. The story on that, Dennis was up there with his finger on the button, and, you know, he could hear us, and the word was to go. And when he hit it, the system crashed and rebooted.
Everybody's saying Silent Night.
We, uh, Mike Delain is, was already on giving us a whole bunch of, it's just, as we know, it's tremendously expensive, so it'll be part of the, the mid-by-hand review. And actually, we probably want to get, get a little bit ahead on that one, because it will take some time to get it procured and, and installed, so.
That could be the special message for next year's festival, is the new chimes.
The new chimes, yes.
Old chimes failed us.
At least they understood it was true.
It was true. It's true. We're doing our annual holiday light tour next Monday, five p.m. I think Brandy's public noticed that, and let Brandy know if you plan to attend. I'm not sure who she's heard from yet, but, uh, looking forward to that. I've done that for years.
Do we have a deadline for that, so we know what size vehicle? Do we have a deadline for that so we know what size vehicle?
We do and, uh, Janine. Is on top of that and she's going to let you know probably.
Friday, no, later than Friday?
Soon, yes. Yes.
Okay. Outside agencies, um, I've got a few of those things plugged into my mayor's report. So others have any outside agency reports? Okay, I'll jump into the mayor's report then. So, uh, we're planning on that ribbon cutting for McCormick Village Park finally on December twenty-first, three PM, if you didn't get the email, uh, yet. Uh, I know Mark and his, and Nick's staff both had walked through yesterday. Still have a little bit of a punch list and I bet you find it hard to believe that, uh, the Hydra seed isn't growing very well right now. So, uh, we're going to get the park open, but we talked about today, you know, we'll have to, you know, like some orange fencing or something after the, after the ribbon cutting to keep folks off of the, what's supposed to be grass and it's kind of mud right now. But, uh, other than that, we're very pleased, you're going to be happy with the park and, but we still got a few things to do in the next couple of weeks before that ribbon cutting. I sit on the Pudsey Sound Regional's Growth Management Policy Board and since our last meeting, I, I was over there. One of the discussions there at, at the policy board is leveraging, leveraging our investments the public's made in high-capacity transits and po, and policies that would require higher densities near transit centers to take advantage of those public investments. And it sounds logical, um, but I have concerns myself with, with losing control, local control and, uh, because I don't think a light rail station in federal way is the same as a ferry terminal in downtown Port Orchard. So, um, there are some, some state, uh, there's some bills that are being introduced that have similar threads to this. I, I think if we can, I, I think we do want to leverage those investments and we do want to, we'll probably require some higher densities around the, um, transit, public transportation, but we, I think we also have to recognize those differences in our community too. So that's, uh, the message I'm delivering there over at, uh, PSRC. So, uh, Kitsap nine-one-one changed their bylaws and they're similar to the language that Kitsap Transit has. So next council meeting, I, I assume that you want me to continue on the transit board. Probably this would be a good point for to tell me or not, um, because we're preparing that resolution and Councilmember Rosa Pepe was going to be the alternate. I also need to be, uh, appointed by you to the Kitsap nine-one-one board unless somebody else wants to do that. Trying to see any volunteers. Okay, so we'll prepare that similar resolution. I am also the, uh, representative on the executive board, which meets every two weeks. Mayor Erickson and I rotate on that. She did it for two years and I've agreed that this will be my second year doing that. We need an alternate, uh, to that board and I believe I talked to Councilmember Clausen about being my alternate for that. You still willing to do that unless somebody else's?
Kitsap nine-one-one's?
Yeah, Kitsap nine-one-one's board. So, okay, so we'll get that, uh, on the agenda next week. Uh, I've had, remember we have a public hearing on our property tax abatement ordinance coming next week? I have had conversation with the fire chief. He loves the idea that we're going to maybe shrink that, that abatement period. He is very much opposed to any, any abatement. Uh, remember we've annexed into the fire district and they get a sliver of our property tax. So, um, just preparing you, he will be here, uh, at our council meeting and the public hearing and probably delivering a letter letting us know that the fire district, uh, would like to be exempted from that. And Sharon's researching whether or not that is even legally permissible. I would have concerns if we exempt one, then other junior taxing districts wouldn't want to participate either. And then really do we have any, are we providing any abatement or economic development activity or, uh, you know, we're not probably getting to that, what, with this intent?
In preparation for that, could someone do the research on what their, um, what that could cost them per million?
I have it.
Okay.
We did, we did that.
To understand that, these decisions and how it impacts people or per hundred thousand or whatever.
I can tell you right now, matter of fact, I had a, a tool created by the finance department. But it was for a specific project, so I'll, I'll be prepared to answer that question that evening because it's an Excel spreadsheet that we created.
Doesn't include the other districts as well? The other?
It does.
Okay, school and librarian.
You know what? It's easy just to plug in dollar amounts to it. How about if I just email it to you? Find Rebecca in the finance department, uh, prepared it for me. So, uh, even if we were able to, the county, uh, assessor tells us that their system is not, lacks the ability to segregate that way, so, um.
It's the county's fault.
So I'm just, you know, just sharing conversations that we're having, uh, as we investigate the, the possibilities. So, uh, I was also Friday, I'm as, uh, the, um, on the board for the Association of Washington Cities, I went to the board meeting on Friday and it was shared with, one, a couple of things were shared with me. They're preparing an amicus brief on the, uh, small cell, uh, action that, uh, Congress took. So, uh, uh, and from, and under the vein of local control that we don't believe the federal government should be able to step in on that. So that's, AWC is, uh, championing that cause. It made us aware too of an initiative that is, the signatures are being verified, uh, be nine seventy-six and it could be on the ballot this next November, uh, that would take car tabs back to thirty dollars. It would have a significant impact on public transportation, the ferry system. I'm not sure that it could happen because of, uh, how Sound Transit funded in Pierce County and King County, their bonding, um, but it would also, if it passed and was upheld, would abolish our transportation benefit district, which would adversely affect Port Orchard because that was part of our funding mechanism for Tremont, uh, to the tune of about two hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's concerning. Uh, I know in January you'll appoint a new mayor pro temp and just making, I've got, uh, a couple of Tuesdays, uh, that I'll miss, one in January for mayor's exchange, uh, in Olympia. And then the AWC action days is to twelve, thirteen, and fourteenth. In the past, I've just gone the second day, but now that I'm on the board, I have a board meeting on the Tuesday in the afternoon, so I'll, I'll need to be down there. Beck touched, touched a little bit about the major employer and I'll just, um, share, so Kitsap, Tony George from Kitsap Bank was at the public facilities district meeting and, uh, he spoke to, um, them, you know, wanting to see this project, uh, the, the public facilities, uh, or the, or the community center being built. And, um, at some point, their, their building is becoming functionally obsolete. They will build a new, uh, corporate campus and, um, consolidate, um, many of their operations that, which could be about two hundred jobs. We're a possibility for that to happen. They have property in East Bremerton and Gig Harbor too, so. And his concern was, you know, they're a major employer down there and they don't want to be the only thing, you know? I, and I take a bit of exception as Councilmember Ashby and I talked about, we're here, the county government is up on the hill, but, um, you know, I, I, I understand their perspective too and it's important for us, uh, you know, in our daily interactions if, you know, to show appreciation to the businesses and employers in our community and how much, uh, how valuable they are to our, our city and our local economy. Let's see, I've been busy at schools lately. Last week I was at Marcus Whitman, uh, twice for two groups of seventh graders, about ninety each time in their theater and we did a mock city council meeting. It was a heck of a lot of fun and I wish I had more time to do things like this all the time, but I've got a script for a mock city council meeting and, uh, I'm sorry if some of you have told this story too, but, uh, so I've got a group of students, seven council members, a mayor and staff and, uh, some participants that are citizens and it's, it's, the story is over a ninety-year-old tree that staff says needs to be, it's dangerous and the city attorney says that we're liable if we don't remove it. And we've got a group of citizens telling us that, um, uh, it needs to be removed and there's the citizens, the tree's in front of their house and it needs to be saved. And I've done this thing, this exercise about twenty times and mostly with foreign exchange students, but the seventh graders really get it. And, uh, the, uh, so only three times have they voted to cut the tree down. It's always, they usually say, say they want to save the tree. So on Thursday afternoon, it was a split vote, four to three, to cut the tree down. And the young man that was playing mayor, was standing next to me on the stage and he turns to me and he goes, "This stinks. When do I get to vote?" And so, so there was the teaching moment, right there. And so we all talked about it and, you know, I had them raise their hands in the vote. And it, it, when I do this, it's amazing how many of the staff members vote, the audience vote, and they all think they get a vote. And why, you know, they don't get a vote and it's the seven council members and, and whatever they decide, that's what happens. So it was, uh, it was fabulous experience and, uh, so today I was at Hidden Creek Elementary and it was, uh, about an hour and a half of grill the mayor with all kinds of different questions. Some are, some are very serious and prepared and others are whimsical and, and I enjoy it all. December nineteenth, uh, Representative Calledier, uh, I'm meeting with her at two thirty and, uh, if two or three of you wanted to join me, I'd, I'd love to have you.
What's that date again?
December nineteenth.
Wednesday.
Do you need, uh, do you need to know because you can only have three of us?
Yeah, we don't have, yeah, I can only, two or three at the most.
What time is it?
Two thirty in the afternoon.
Hmm. I'm out at that time.
Okay, I'm in Seattle.
But I'd love to make a future one.
Okay, so.
Let me know when I.
Okay, so maybe John? Cindy? Okay.
Let me know for sure though, I'm not going to put it in until you let me know.
It's, you're inked, right here.
Okay.
I could come up, Jay can.
I can't, I can't.
Jay can, sorry.
I know that she enjoys, um, the more, the merrier.
More the merrier, that's right. And she didn't have any specific requests. Sometimes she wants to meet with specific individuals. I asked the question, she said, uh, whoever could make it, so.
We're.
Uh, here at City Hall in the conference room. Uh, yeah, downstairs. Conference room.
You said two thirty?
Two thirty, yep. All right, and, uh, Councilmember Deener had a great idea yesterday, approached me. Jedi Minters, remember we had Jedi's Day? And, uh, so, uh, Thomas reached out to Jedi and, um, his family and he is not doing well. He's back at Children's Hospital and, uh, but Councilmember Deener thought it would be, uh, a great idea, uh, to maybe send holiday cards or, um, you know, well wishes to him. So I had, and their, the parents were receptive, so I have their address and it's three ten, and I'll email it to you, but just for the public. I think it'd be great if our community got behind this and, and, uh, I announced this at Rotary today and, uh, there, our Rotary Club's going to participate in this too. Three ten Flower Street here in Port Orchard, nine eight three six six. And then you don't have to make a decision at the moment, but start thinking about a retreat and whether, and what we want to do. We don't have a budget, so it doesn't need to be budget-centric this next year and, uh, what we want to do for, uh, you know, we want to be productive in that time if we're going to have one. So that's a lot, I'm sorry. And we are going to have a bargaining session, uh, after this meeting. Brandy maybe can cite the RCW for me because I don't have it at the tip of my tongue and we'll get to that after we have public comment. So after the reports of the department heads, when Brandy gets to her, she'll have that RCW. Mr. Versi?
First of all, I'd like to say I'm extremely disappointed that I'm never going to get to vote. I thought at some point I'd be asked to be like a council pro temp or something, but.
You want to trade chairs?
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, as the mayor said, McCormick Park, we're in the closeout phase, punch list, uh, the grand, uh, ribbon cutting is still going to occur on the twenty-first, I believe, but there's some things that still need to be done out there before that's fully functional. On Tremont, uh, despite the strike and some other issues, this extended construction season has allowed us to get all the base paving down from sixteen on Tremont all the way up to Pottery, uh, including obviously South Kitsap and Canyon Court and on Pottery North and South and the westbound lane between Port Orchard Boulevard and Pottery. So unfortunately now we're into this kind of slog that is, we're struggling now to get the associated sidewalks done because we can't transfer that traffic over until that work's done. So when we finally get that southbound or the eastbound lane done, uh, get transferred over and then we can start using the Pottery roundabout as a roundabout for the rest of the years, it's just we're completely weather-dependent at this point. Uh, another completely weather-dependent, uh, issue right now is Bay Street, segment three, um, we're into the same, you know, poor weather, that natural gas line breakup in Canada has obviously affected both cost and ability to deliver asphalt, uh, so we're kind of, that project, I'd say right now it's probably sixty, forty that we're going to suspend that project until the spring to do the final paving and the final, uh, striping. So, uh, now, I guess to end on a good note, we are advertising this Friday for the Rockwell Pocket Park and we'll be bringing a contract, uh, to the council on January eleventh with a notice of award. And then as soon as we get through the appeal period on the hearing, which we've already had on the project for the shoreline permit, um, we've set those up, those, hopefully will align within fourteen days of the eleventh. So by the end of January, I'm hoping that we can issue the notice to proceed and then we can get moving on that. One benefit of actually suspending the project would be, we wouldn't have this brand-new asphalt being ran over by many excavators and concrete trucks and things. So it may be just prudent at this point to suspend the one project, get the other one done and then have this kind of overlap. So, um, that's really kind of where we're at. I'm really excited to see some of these, to see this two thousand eighteen project list start to settle down a bit, so. That's it.
Thanks, Mark. Noah?
Uh, nothing for me for now, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bond?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Sharon?
Nothing for me.
Deb, I know, we're going to talk in the back room, I know. So Brandy, you want to cite that RCW?
Yes. So as the mayor stated, that the council will adjourn this meeting and enter into a separate meeting regarding the collective bargaining pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty one forty subsection three, excuse me, subsection four A.
Okay, and I pulled, opened this, when I emailed this Excel spreadsheet to you, it has the exact project out on Sedgwick, that's what we created it for, so we could calculate the benefit. The fire district's levy rate per thousand is two point zero seven one six three, which at the current assessed value, uh, that site, oh, excuse me, yes, so seventeen hundred and forty-three dollars is the taxes per, to the fire, nine thousand nine hundred dollars in taxes, this fire district's portion is seventeen hundred dollars. And the twenty million, the developer says it's twenty million dollar project, which would generate two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in taxes and the fire district's portion is forty-one thousand four thirty-three. But if it isn't built, we don't get the taxes. So, but I'll give you this spreadsheet and it details every junior taxing district and the impact to each one of them. So it's a great little tool. So with that, we are to our second citizen comment period. Welcome. Yes, just identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, honorable Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Cecilia Adrian and me and my husband Jim owns a twelve-unit apartment on Dry Street, Port Orchard. It consists of three buildings and therefore it, we have three water bills. And it has been a low-income housing project since it was built in nineteen ninety-one and we were the manager for this since then. manager for this since then. Last week, I received a letter from Port Orchard Utilities saying that I have three delinquent water bills, and, and there's a late charge of $281.86. We called and spoke to Kathy Kane at Utility Buildings, who confirmed that the original bills were sent out, but, which we never saw. Consequently, the bills was not, not paid. She looked into our past history, which only went back to 2000, the year 2000. I printed out the history of one of the, of the bills, and it is 24 pages long. And, it only have 18 years' worth of the history, and I'm going to show you that attached. As reflected in the history, the bills were paid always on time. Kathy talked with the finance officer that day, and the only way to waive the late charge is to appeal to the city council. That's why I'm here. And, we have been paying our bills ever since 1991. I'm not sure who, who was to blame for my missing water bills, but the cost of the mistake is too high, is 10% of the total bill. Your customers should have latitude to make mistakes. Therefore, in the light of Christmas spirit, also in the faith that we have been a perfect customers, as demonstrated by the payments of my records, we ask you to waive the $281.86. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to, for the positive response. I'm going to leave a letter for the city clerk, and one to the mayor, since you cannot vote, and I don't know whether I should...
The clerk pays, I can't vote. That's right. So, and I know that's an agenda item on your utility committee next week. But, the finance department is processing those according to our code. Yeah, there's also another, there's another one, yes. So...
Do you have any questions, Will?
No.
Thank you.
Others wishing to address the council?
Did, did you hear what the mayor said, though?
There's a utility committee meeting next week that happens to have the subject matter on the, the utility committee agenda. It is at, where is it?
9:30.
December 17th at 9:30 here at City Hall.
It's only in the conference room?
Yes, it is. Yes.
It will be addressed.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Others wishing to address the council? With that, we're adjourned the meeting, and we're heading into a labor...